They need to hang up. Yeah. I. But I was there on their end there in the city. All of it, yeah. And maybe so you think you'd have to be on it to see. I mean, track. So, um. My guess is there is. I already killed a one. And I feel like I'm doing out of your life. It kind of like I thought they should have seen this, do this. But the law.
And then that's people who are really poor.
You got to, uh, those people by the local.
All these poor guys.
Hello. Well, you know, but it's like it was so close. Started doing insurance online and just never came back. There is. So, uh, I would say, I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't think so. There were any complaints. About it. It's good. Yeah. But it's still. Or. Down this way. So I just say that. We're gonna be. And sharing my. Also, I was. It's a big, big loss to some of my parents. My parents. Uh, we always like you. Our last one that we had. I don't know. But it's. So that's. Also, I'm.
The garden.
We've got to see that knowledge, that's all that we're all for. If we use that with uh.
Yes. If we leave the lots of things on the one day off. So we if the sheriff takes the other one, we leave all the flats and everything and I guess leave that up right here in there.
Well, I'm not sure if I just want to be rid of this, so we'll be rid of it all the way.
It would be nice. So you can use your privacy or your or um so my first. So you can make that just as hard to have as that rule and then.
I think that was something that we were just.
And so just as well also stuff so you could leave the last of the heat.
I'll let you have to do that change of practice.
Yes.
Same like us. Oh, sir. Sir, um.
Not still letting all the.
Sheriff, I'm only trying to go out there, but later. I'm gonna have to do that. Right here, we need sense of honor.
What about transform that heat into the shares almost to you?
We should do that. I have just already, I guess.
No.
I will come out.
Tell it to stay only part of you, there are anything else.
We will speak out loud.
Oh, that's that's very good. Oh.
Oh.
Let's get out of here, can't hear any noise.
Yeah, well. Wouldn't he talk about.
I guess. Maybe my whole mind is in here, can't hear.
There's okay, I have another thing on um we can have um discussing several block powers request for exception to the young, young, tiny subjects with rules regulations. We have not allowed to answer with this property of sale with uh here, here, so the proud panel will come on a clear from account title. So we can press.
See that.
Go ahead, just over here, wake up loudly for like you know, it's a gallery. Survey has some surveys um like my, I think I remember right now, well, I mean, they brought on that thing. Last. We have something to write up. You know, on here. We're sure where. And all of them say, yes, they do. That would work very well. So we're not going to be building house, all the building. I don't. So it's our. But then we're kids and they don't. We're gonna have coffee, we're gonna have water, more than just. Yeah. We're not getting the cost of. We're. I see. So this is kind of it, and that is one change in the system, the stress. And I'm not sure how. So uh. Playing the game of this ball. We already have uh. Well, that's just so. I'm just asking about this week. I'm always. By my own terms, we can't just run this ball. The entire possibility for you to house. Powerline by the way, the time that they're. Even this location, that's great power. See the entire thing. We're seeing the process. Question. There's a very big point here, here. That's uh, we got a purchase. We have that part of the cell where it works for all the various. Also, I. This way, I'm coming to say, right, which is what I'm thinking of. That's the problem today. We can't. Okay, and that's it. Okay, this is. Say. So. All rights, all rights. Yeah, here is the session, so. I'll have a very big question. What very. Just that separation of various channels of houses here. I think they won't. First of all, question, I probably for. Or maybe we're making, I have ordered. Our site, I don't know. Yes. Um, and it goes safe. Like that, the third one. Go one back. Of go code. On every day plan. Our thing. Subway, whatever. Very soon. They're not native. Or those that have subdivision, obviously, they'll be recorded in our main reference. Here. Look, our own problem. The dance on. House, although it might get some time in the future. With those. Might look. Kind of the. And I don't know, so. But anyway, not obvious. No, no, I didn't have all the cameras, like. Here. So I'll be a little bit present here for. So basically, uh, Michael, of course. Michael, yeah. Loaded it in, and it's. Is it all um. And. And such. The regulation. I would like to. All here. As here, that good thing, which. Then. Either for. Yes. That's that. And I'm far kind of the land, a lot of. And I think people are. I just do a lot of. Talking about this, well. Why. I guess. Why is it trapped down there? I'm not why. The other way. So. That's why. Yeah. The thing. Right there. The price. Probably all this time. And pressure. So. There's a whole lot of time, so. I guess. So. That's about it, so. We go seventy, we can build a house. We just. Well, I think that construction will be. Be pretty busy, and that I try to have. I know that was a problem. How many people wanted to live in that way? There was something that happened. Like. This time. The. Or are they gonna be? Yeah. We have to. Like. Both they all. All of them. Yes, sir. Uh, you know. Uh, they block. You know. By. I'll. The. The. Just. I'm. Um, boy, I'm glad. And so. On the other side. I have. Yeah, it's actually made of reason. A lot of. Here. Well, it. That's how we're sharing. That you thought. Good. For that. Link problem. And we can say. Well, sadly. The. We have a lot of. To. So. They. How is it? They can have that. Yes, to have that. So they have that. Some of the. Sorry. It's not worth it. Yes. Look, I'm. The problem. And. What is the problem? Our. Why is this? So. Or. Some parts of. It's not. That's. So. So. What. It's either my thoughts or account. There's that. So. Gasoline is too. So. They. So. Got your love, we talked about here. There's so. I. Yes. So. It's. So. I. Sure. Next time. Next time. The. I just like that. Or. So. All. We are. Yes. Yes. I. There's. We. Power, I'm trying now. I'm. 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 Three. Press. All that. And. That's. That is like. Oh, thanks. Another. That's true. We don't know the chances to be. The best. That we should. So. Probably we are. Now. Trust. That's. I said, yeah, that's. It's my point here. There are not any. Part. It's something that. It's something. You're lying. All those other. Don't. I. Other. Yeah. I don't. It would. We. That's. Yeah. And like. That's. Well, too, we have. The. Everyone. In. Um, so. And we'll talk anymore about. Project. Out there. Or you break the everybody. Around. Well, we're. Playing the game of. All. Now. We're. Um, it's property. It's like. This. So. It's. Yeah. The. Yes. You know. That's. And. That's a lot of. Looks like a little more than you're building. Like uh. Probably take uh. Your hat. And. That's. Years. It takes a while. I'm sure. So. I. Sure. So. I mean. I mean. Sir. Or. So. That's. Obviously. That way. To. Yes. Oh. So. That's. That's. It's. So. And. Of course. All of them. Very. Your. I'm not like. Like. It's all the same. Sure, I see where churches. I like it. I have a lot. But it's important. That. All of them. Or property. The sanctuary. That's. Do you operate? Yeah. Or. And then. That's. I'm just. I think. I think that. Research. I'd say. It's. This is. I. And that. I have. So. I would absolutely. Thank you. And. It's. I. It's. Okay. So. 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 One minute. I think. We. More. This. Yeah. I guess. I don't know. But. I. I. It may. Just. We. Well, we. There's. A lot of. Sure. There are. So. I think. I just. Or. It's. It. We. Are. They're Jason's. All of these Jasons. It's. So. We all. Yes. And. Fire. Right there. It's. Six. We'll be six. Yeah. It's just like. It's. Right there. It's. Yeah. It's. But. There. Play this. I'm not. All. Working around. It's like. They. So. We. Well, there's. Almost this project. Um. They expect it. Um. I have. Yeah. To. Or. So. Like. The. Or. Say food. Or one. I. I. So. I'm. So. So. I guess. I. I have. Here. I have. But. They play. All. A lot of. Local. There's. So. I. Put. So. I. So. I. Really. Really. Over. Okay. I. Like. Well, yeah, you. Ah. So. Here. We. Of. Um. Okay. And. Will. Um. Um. You. Have. So. Far. We might be all necessary. Um. For. But. But. That was. I. I was. Some of. The. Or. It's. And. That's. It's. But. Like. Like. I. I. Um. For. Set. All right. Uh. I. Great discuss, I don't know. I. I'm. Pretty. But. Can you explain it? What's with this? Little. That's. The. You. Right. Little. Thanks. I don't know. Let. This. So. Or. We're. Thank. And then. Thank. It's. The. I don't know. Well. We're. The. Workshop. We have. They. They. And. I. Then. The. I. Mom. We're talking. We. And. We. The. We. I. And. I. But. That's. You. And. I. You. I. I. Okay. This. So. While. Like. One. Which is. I. Gotta consider both. On. Like. Back. Or. What. I don't have. Sixty five hundred. It's all. What. Make a lot. And. I should just. Go. Yeah. And. It's. And. That. We got it. We. 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 And. There. I. I. Or. And. And. I. Perhaps. Sixty five. Now. All. Like. Another. Boy. And. We. For. I. Possibly. I. Somebody. All night. Very. Very. Such. Like. I. Would. My. Joke. Okay. I have. Like. One. Or. Rice. Oh. And. This is. Wait. I. I. Type. Head. Never. The. Out. So. That was. Shelley. Oh. Maybe. I. Yeah. There. There. I. I. But. I. Just. Okay. Right. Okay. I. So. Contact. Like. All. It's. Well. What is this? I. I. Hold. It's. All. Already. For. It's. That's. Already. I. I don't know. I. But. You. So. That's all. My. So. I. Say. Hi. Important thing. Some. I. I. We. That. I. I. It's. I. 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 So. Listen. Let me. Get. It's. A lot of money. But. Up there. Yeah. Or. Or. It's. Yeah. Lots. I think that's. I don't know. Not at all. You're. Last. We. That. So. Far. But. Like. I. Put it in. Like. I mean. You. You. Of. That. Your. Down. And. That. It's. And. But. I. 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 Or. I don't know. But. I don't think so. So. I would think so. He. Did. And. Like. It would be. That's. So. I. 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 Like. I. I. Sorry. This. I. I'll. Say. I. Wow. But. Sixty. Now. You. Like. That. Oh. It's. Harley. Um. I. Worked. Out. Now.
Yes.
Yeah. I'll. Talk. About. That. We. Had. Other. Discuss. All. I. Hope. A little bit. Hope. Like. Now. So. I. Or. I'm. Hope. I. A lot of. Time. For. Right now. We're. To. But. Workshop. They. All.
That's. Seven. Six. Thank you for. Any. Thanks. We have. We definitely have any significant changes to make to the. The budget. With. My. Effect. That. Our. Really. Sorry. Because. Our. We. Investigator. We. Have. Investigator. It's like. I. I.
We are asking for a full time investigator. Our. One. This. The. Does not have a full time investigator. Um. Full time investigator benefits us from the. Intake.
Um, full time investigator benefits us from the intent for our preparation. Take new cases or new cases. Trial preparation. Uh, we have called. We have had four murders. We have recently. And we also we have moved that sensitive trials. Uh, one of those legitimate death in the case. Uh, that we're also having. A lot of money. Uh, and we were able to avoid the cost of that. Where they would have created. To assist justice. However, what we're what we're looking at. Is that when we had those kind of cases or the more complex type cases. Going on. The fix had a proven access to investigators that we did not have access to. Prosecution. And so it was really getting as hard as anything. On the quantity. That those cases were working. They had a mitigation investigator. And that was investigator. Then with this one town with a presentation event. It's. And that personal strategy. They also had an actual business investigator running around here. And as we've been looking into the investigation that will follow them as well. So we were down to investigators. Out of the circumstances. And we're here to protect the county. We're here to prosecute cases that need to be prosecuted. And not prosecute cases that don't need to be prosecuted. And we have had that luxury. And we have been very, very fortunate as county and district for all seasons. In young county to avoid the necessity of of large complex trials. And so we're asking for uh the folks to have a full time investigator. And the way we're proposing this is, you know, if you have an average jail population of sixty five to sixty people per year. You're able to afford that overall average of two people. Then that's positive. You can see everybody get a full time investigator. It's a call for all. We also see this campaign roughly at those costs. And so it could be a it could be a revenue neutral scenario with this. I can envision the ability to match the move cases that are in jail a little bit further. The full time investigator direction. And you can take some very ready for diving quicker. And you're able to pursue those in trial. So as far as, you know, there's there might be kind of a spare shot. Or without the asking for money. Uh, but the reality is that you see the drop in your population overall. It actually pays for itself. It doesn't necessarily pay for itself out of the district attorney. But it does cover someplace else in another budget. Okay, and that's the way that Stevens County has been just by bringing in a defender on a full time basis. And it's been very beneficial to them. And so uh our aspect of it is they have to work full time investigator. And our qualification is our wanting senior level person to come in. We don't want an investigator that we have trained because we need to be sending our house attorneys. Okay. And so you're talking about a salary range of sixty to sixty five thousand dollars. Uh, Palo Alto has a sixty two thousand seven hundred thirty three dollar salary per year. I believe he slipped it to the. A little bit. But he could.
They are. And.
And and so the flights to get to it. Uh, we we really dearly need this. And if you weren't that money going out for a part of a best, you're not talking. You know. You know, four forty thousand dollars in our budget. You're talking a lot less. And so we would like to consider that. We can't. I think actually we can't start talking to Stevens County about this yet. Because they're under different budget cycle. And so they're not allowed to start discussing budget yet. We definitely need to talk to Stevens County about this. And their issue, we would like to consider the possibility of getting us a full time investigator.
It it's absolutely crucial for D H offices to have a investigator that can go out. I spend half the time when I'm getting ready for a trial. I spend time just trying to find witnesses myself. Rather than actually together. Things that legal arguments or uh being able to deal with other cases. I'm just out there trying to find words. And it's very time consuming. And that's something that. When a state they can do that. They have to actually be in trial.
And if you're you're. I had. Investigator. I remember. Back on. And let's go. Say. Or. Investigator. I can.
We have uh to consider parts online. Because we only take. So we have fifteen thousand.
And it's on. Insurance.
No.
And I. You can exactly possibly have a trial coming up. For this year, we actually have our. For. So. You know, you can't send Joe Siskar out there to go serve or anything else. Big office. Or I can have that. An investigator. But having an investigator to actually actively pursue those people. Get that line up. And ask questions we have asked for. The year itself, we started interviewing for test. Um, that's very important. And this guy is a very, very, very uh large complex cases. It needs to be. So we just need to work out. Uh, the race is out and the walls emerge. We still have sexual assault upon children, sexual assault upon adults. We have intoxication and slaughter cases. We're looking at having to get tried for those people. So. Uh, so we have our sheriff. Our cases. For. As far as uh. Investigator. Go down. And also face that. Who do you think? I'm one that said here. Should it? Do you say that? Crime is increased. It's actually. You're not sure crime is different than it was. I don't know if it's necessarily increased or not. In some aspects it's it's decreased. But the severity, the severity crime has gone up. And definitely I think probably. I almost. I mean, I can give you example. We have uh younger people. These are basically crimes that will eventually basically develop. So you have a lot of murder. Or. Running around. And even. Uh, and amongst that. We're able to turn into. You know, operator, aggravated robbery. Like that. And I'm just ready to do the right job with that aspect of it. We have cases that started out. Uh, breaking a couple vehicles and then. More than aggravated robbery losses. And so there's a nervous. We just don't know what came today. Can happen tomorrow. But we make sure we have an obligation to be prepared. We have the most telling they ever heard. Right ranger after a great hearing. Is it? You being there to turn it off as a law. They're all here to protect us. We need to be in a situation where we're not waiting for something bad to happen. And then try to face it at that point. We need to be there. Not just barely for our return. We need to be valid. And straight over your ass. It's changing. Service changes. And we follow more complex. Uh, we have, you know, sheriff will call us from both angles. I have not. We're not able to do solid X Y's. We've got to be there and investigate. And be careful of those ones. And so, I mean, we're not going here thinking. You know, joking about the talk of just getting that toxic. We want to treat everything that we see that. But we didn't. Best part of all our cases. From Minnesota. County. Younger states. County. For. Trying to be. All the things we have. T P S. Yeah. I would give you an example. Despite this efforts. We see law enforcement agencies. Will send will send us their case. That they will look at. And in March, we'll have very soon. Say, well, we need X Y's. And sometimes we're able to send. Back to the. The investigators say, hey, we made this medical report. It's possible. Procedures. And we're still going to ask law enforcement. Continue doing that part at some point in time. You have to have somebody able to look at everything and see how they're first. Trial and every more asking for salaries to measure the experience of investigators. Not to be sure. Maybe that's experience investigators can help see. Typically, you're going to have medical. And typically, you're going to have that. All of us. Be able to have a marshal last bit. That's needed. The outside. It's your. Your victims and everything else. We went to the. Albany County. Yes. But I was thinking about. This. Yes. I'm. On the question there. We're only going to get it. It's going to come as far as there was. Uh, and it's it's probably measured with youngest teams. Uh, and so it's based on. It's. Down there. But. And they totally have. They pay the hell out there. For. So, um, I mean, yeah, that's basically just. We're getting sex agencies. You know, living out of the four places. They did. Living out of the four places. And on the side, yeah, I'm not saying that. See that they're living a little smaller. They still have. Most agencies. If they had. I mean, when you're. Everything else. But, um, if you took the number of cases. We're in a balance. We're in. And we we do a good job. Our office. But moving stuff and moving things out. Especially. But I believe this time they have a full time investigator. Also number two. Jails. Sixty six thousand. So we take the. Seventeen. Eighteen. And ten is talking. You talk about thirty five thousand dollars. Also. On the young. And. Then you got to answer. And. Another. I'm blessed. I don't worry about the rest. I'll do. Appreciate it. We need. A full time investigator. Maybe if you start with sixty. People. I have sixty. And this is talk to. To entertain people who are senior level investigator. If you start at less than that, you're going to get people who are on experience. Questions? Not anybody. Let. Anybody sound like it? Or we do. Or. Try. You. That was just. It's uh well, it's not the. Getting. Or. Or. And I was very busy looking at the fights. I can't. That's like. Just. Looking at this much. My. Like that. My next number. We can buy. I'm sure that's the way they're looking at. Or they just might. Why do we? I don't know. But. Can't talk about. This guy. I want to say. Um. For all. This. Wait on. First. Yeah. And we. And uh we made that conversation with certain people. That was social. That we were so on. Reckless about that. Because they have to. Set that last.
And just uh so you'll know. The average. How many wanted inmate per year of fourteen thirty one thousand?
That's. We're roughly one to two people. It's uh. It's working. While they have to be actually. I got a call starting a lot. We got to check for working cases. Constantly. People through files. That's what we do. And starting to see what we can set. What we can. We. And if I was to go trial quickly. What we. Really. And that's why we are walking. I deserve once. And a lot of people. Lot of people. To manage. The case. And our free trials are also an opportunity to give people. To say, yeah, I'm going to take it for a year. Now let's try it. You know what you're having to do with the trial. So.
The majority of our trials are central. And central.
They're very complex. I think. Any questions? I think we'll be looking at. We. You have. And. I'm. After. And after I don't want to get. We're. So. I know you. Yeah. I mean, this is. We. I mean.
We had. We had. For.
For.
That. Anything. Anything. There. Any success with that?
Yeah. This recorder is. Untable. And. When I have a turnover, they can have it. Saw the conversation over there. Hey. And I always say that. Try to put on my computer. I guess.
Wow. Let let me see that. I need to write that down.
Yeah, I've been using that since college.
Age one. Two. I think it's great.
I'd say probably eighty bucks for it. But that was also almost ten years ago. That's.
Wow. Can I write that down?
Are you serious?
Oh, Cheryl. I mean. Let's see. Where did that go? Right. I wonder where Cheryl is. I was going to talk to him. Cause I heard that some of those wires that they've been. Getting. Possibly somebody sent.
So. Well, I've heard of some. One of them. Here. You're.
Yeah. I was looking up here to talk about thunder. Cause I haven't been here. Or they know anything else.
Yeah.
We're.
We can. Look. For. Um. And all. Is there.
That's what you're.
I think that's our video. Cher. Well. We have. We. We. Very. Very. I'm. All. Right. These. There's. Yeah. Yeah. To reset. You. It's. Or. Uh. Sure. And I'm. So. I was. Okay. I'm here. Sorry. I got. You guys. You guys. Thank you.
He said. I'm. Kind of. Sure.
I. I'm. He tells. I mentioned. So. I'm. 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 Like. I'm. And I. All of this. I just. We. 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 Like. I'm. I'm. And three years. We have last year. So. So. Or. So. That's. I guess. And. But. I'm. I'm. Very.
Okay. But then also maybe a little counter. The sense of anything. You're. That. Or. Actually. Right.
Well. First. It's. Like. Or. You. But. I'm. And. I'm. 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 Hard. I'll. You. Have. You. I'm. 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 I'm.
All right. Good. Well, if that makes things to me now.
I'm. I can't. You. I'm. I'm. I'm.
But. Yeah. We can.
We. All. I'm. It's. So. I'm.
Here. And. I. I. I.
I. So. The. They. I share. But. You know. I'm. Out. I heard. I'm. I. 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 We're. So. We. 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 I'm. I'm. I'm.
Access. We. I'm. Just. Uh. And. That's. Yeah. We. This. It's. I have. Show. Exactly. The. Water. We. Remember that one year when you were here? You know. You had that big. Fresh. And all of it. We didn't have any. Fans or anything. We're. And. I used to. So. We. Well. Yeah. We had that big. That show thing. We rented. All. The. God. We were. Second. Year. Sorry. I can't. I. I don't. Think. Hi.
I was.